This meeting will come to order. Madam President, please call the roll.
Mind this while sometimes. Out of woman key.
Out of woman.
Yeah, Vice Mayor.
I'm here, wake up Sharon.
Out of man.
I'm here. Okay, great. All right, Vice Mayor, if you would, please lead us. Prayer. We'll pledge to our allegiance.
In the name of Jesus, dear heavenly Father, we come to you, Lord, in the holy way we know how, asking you to please forgive us for all of our sins. Lord, we thank you for your grace and your mercy. God, we thank you for all your wonderful blessings. Father, I ask that you watch over us, protect us. Lord, keep our families covered under your blood. And Lord, I ask, God, that you will bless this meeting, help us to make the right decisions, decisions that are pleasing unto you. And Lord, I'll be so careful to give you all the glory, honor, and praise. In Jesus' holy name we pray, and everybody say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Thank y'all. All right, we'll just jump right on in. Let me switch sheets on you here real quick. And we'll go through our standard work and draft. And I have a few things. I did this a while ago, so I'll just talk through. And I'll talk through slowly, and we'll discuss each one of these points. Blood City's doing great. I have nothing negative to report to you, zero. Our twenty-three employees are performing well. The affairs of the town financially, operationally, and otherwise are working great. No issues. Just note number one, Sharon, obviously, is involved in our standard budget reconciliation, and that's part of our preparation for audit. And she goes through our budget from last year, line by line, by line, by line, by line, number by number. And we expect another wonderful audit here coming up in a couple of months. From what I understand, the numbers look favorable. I'll give you more on that as we get closer. But predictions were accurate, numbers are favorable. Vacation policy. This is something that I'll be bringing before you, and this is something that I discussed with Paul today. According to our handbook, Sections two, four dash two fifteen through four dash two twenty, that and the employee handbook discusses the employee compensation package, which includes holiday leave, vacation, sick pay, and leave without pay, et cetera. Now, we've talked before about going through that policy because honestly, it's antiquated. And something, and I had a discussion today with Paul about the carrying over of vacation time. Now, at this point, according to those sections of the handbook, an employee can only accrue one hundred and sixty hours of vacation. And that's the cap. Our employees, some are very senior. And according to your seniority in the handbook, you are granted annually forty, eighty, one hundred and twenty, or one hundred and sixty hours on your anniversary day. Most employees take their vacation time. But some, due to critical roles, are not able to... With, you know, accruing one hundred and sixty hours at one time, they're already over, you know what I'm saying? When they get to their anniversary. So I'm going to put something together to present to you that will eventually do it for this budget year. And then at each budget year, right before each budget year, that we look at the employees and those that qualify, and then potentially offer to buy a certain amount of hours from them, compensate them. Compensate them for hours, and it'll do two things. One, it's already money we would pay them.
Right.
Number two, it would bring them back into compliance with our pricing policy. And at this point, we do have six or seven employees that currently would fall under that criteria that are either really close to or have already met the one hundred and sixty hours of vacation time. Now, this would not be a laissez-faire policy where an employee could walk in and just needs a few extra bucks and says, oh, you paid me eight hours because we're not gonna do it down here. We're gonna do it, and what I want to present to you for approval is that we do it commensurate with the new budget or prior to the new budget, so that we can plan for that expense. And so I will, I'll put something together for you to review as far as what this might look like. And the way it will be presented to you is that it will be a discussion and action. You will make a decision that doesn't change any ordinance or anything in the handbook. But I will name to you the employee, the amount of hours requested, and then the rate, so that you understand the amount of money here that you either approve or disapprove for us to pay those employees. So more, more to follow on that. I think it's a good idea because what happens if you don't do that is... I ran into this with nine-one-one where people had like hundreds of days of vacation. Yeah, right. And basically what they do is just bank them up, and then right before they retire, they'll, they'll take, you know, four months of their accrued vacation time. And they say, you know, like, you're paying somebody that's not working at all. You're out of an employee, and it really can monkey up your budgets. Right, and that's the reason that I've been thinking about this for a while, and I just brought Paul in as a sounding board, and we kind of talked this thing out. And it benefits the employee because like, for example, a couple of employees, like Sharon. Sharon is a critical employee. Kevin Smith, Lieutenant Kevin Smith, is a member of the Second District Regional Drug Task Force. He's doing something else, and he's new to the task force. It's just an example. I'm not telling you we're approving or denying it. But it's probably not feasible for him to take forty hours of vacation. You know what I'm saying? So what we would do is we would look at case by case at those employees, talk to the supervisors, their department heads, and develop a list of those who qualify. We'd approach that employee and then come to the board with a recommended list of folks that we would pay perhaps up to forty hours. I don't think that we should pay any more than forty hours, honestly. I mean, we have, we have folks right now in the one hundred and sixties, you know what I'm saying? But we don't want to, we don't want to go and say, okay, employee, we'll buy every dime of your vacation. You know, that's not good. So maybe up to forty hours we would buy it.
So what you're saying is, you're saying that somebody comes and says, well, I'm not gonna take a vacation, so I'm just, if I could get my forty hour pay, is that what you're saying?
Well, kinda. We want to buy enough to get them back into compliance, you know what I'm saying? But we also, we want to encourage our employees to take their vacation and get away from the job. So we gotta kind of weigh it in the middle. And we can't just say... We do have an employee now that, we've had a couple actually, and they just say every year, oh, I don't like vacation, I don't want to take vacation. That's not healthy for the work environment. We want them to do that. Even if it's long weekends or something, you know what I'm saying? To get away from the job. So we're not exempting, you know, what the true core policy is of vacation. But if there are critical situations, like I mentioned Lieutenant Kevin Smith, he's at one hundred and sixty plus hours now, then it may be a better solution to just say, Kevin, would you like for us to just pay you forty hours? And it'll bring you down to one twenty-seven, whatever, you know what I'm saying?
Well, when all said and done, it's still money anyway, right?
It's still money.
Oh, okay. Well, a lot of companies do that.
Right.
A lot of companies do that.
Right. So I'll put something together for you to look at. And hopefully, very soon, a list of employees that we've counseled, talked to, and determined the best course of action for the town and for the employees, and bring it for your decision. Just wanted to recap Rico Griggs Day. It was awesome. Awesome day here in Blood City this last Saturday. I'm sure if you saw it on the news, it was well-covered. Did you see it then? It was well-covered. You know the story about Rico Griggs?
I don't feel bad I didn't know it either.
Okay.
I was in Nashville.
So Rico Griggs, okay, let me back it up. About ten days ago, on Saturday evening, weekend before last, a family that lives out here on Blood City.
Oh, yeah, I know, it was the...
Suffered a fire.
Fire, yeah.
Yeah. Well, anyway, the hero of the situation is four-year-old Rico Griggs, excedentous family. So when I was informed of the situation, right, we went into action. And we, as a town, Blood City Family Committee, several churches, and other nonprofit organizations went into action and started collecting money, furniture, clothing, shoes, household goods, you name it, the gamble for the family. And I then decided, I sent y'all a text. I said, we need to honor this young man. So at that point, I wrote proclamation, I named Saturday Rico Griggs Day, as you probably saw in the text. I contacted my friend Bill Haggerty. He couldn't be here. He sent a letter, personal letter of Rico Griggs. Contacted Diana. Diana at first said she couldn't be here, and then I saw her on Saturday, and then she decided she could, so we backed the event. Because we were gonna have picnic in park anyway. And we backed the event and actually had the family there and honored Rico with a proclamation, a letter from Bill Haggerty. Diana was there with a congressional record certificate, a certificate and a coin. And just had a wonderful time. And then had picnic in park, which was very successful. So the, you know, the cool thing about that is not that we honored Rico as a town. It is that the town and all the folks involved in the community, all the nonprofits and the churches came together. And the Griggs family received a pretty significant amount in the thousands. And a plethora of clothing. Grace Manor furnished, pretty much furnished, living room suit, two-bedroom suits, TV stand, TV. You know what I'm saying? Clothing, and I'm talking about nice clothing, clothing with tags on it. BMS, my friend Janet Calhan from BMS brought a significant donation and a lot of different things. So the whole town, this whole community, this Parson County came together and really took care of it.
That's great.
It's great to live here.
Yeah, it certainly is. These things in red are just things that are gonna be on the agenda for our upcoming BMA. We'll have to look again at special call meeting minutes on June thirtieth and July tenth, and then the regular call meeting minutes of August first are coming up for you to look at. Local government staff, citizen poor, we're going to delve into that once Sharon reconciles the budget and she's safe and feels we're ready for the audit. But not until, we're gonna stay on the old system until we get there. Sandra is gonna retire, I guess.
I'm sorry?
She's gonna retire, she's moving.
Oh. Has she told you that?
No, but the reason I put that on there is that once she does make that decision, I would like to honor her.
Oh.
We'll honor her as a board, yeah. And I just put retirement, you know, she's been a good member of the board twice. Yeah, so.
I'm not sure when she's...
Yeah, we don't know when that's gonna be. But she has announced that she is moving, and right now she resides in Blood City. It's no big deal, you know, this, that, and the other. But when her time does come, then I just want to make sure we come together as a board and honor her service. New zoning ordinance, you've already saw that once on first reading. It'll come back to you in public hearing at this September BMA next week. Phase three water and sewer project, we are at ninety-nine percent complete. The only thing that we lack on phase three is this cosmetic stuff. Thomas has to, I had to call Thomas back on a situation, two situations. One on Carter Street where the drainage there at the railroad track was not to standard. And also, I had to call him back on a situation at three thirty-six Carter, I mean, Main Street, near the Senior Citizen Center. We noticed some sinkage, and we went down and discovered that a storm drain was not properly fitted. So they are working that situation now. They're gonna make it right, you know what I'm saying? So they've been good about it so far, the gig list, the punch list that I found, Ellen and I found when we reviewed the project. And then they're gonna repave on the south side of Main Street where they dug. They're gonna come back, and we coordinate with T-Dog because it is a state road, and they're gonna cut about an eight-foot swath through there and re-meal it and put the road back exactly right. That'll become a reason. And then Sharon and I are working through any of the engineering fees or anything like that that are left in arrears on the overreach for the project. And we'll come back to you when that happens. Sharon has been carefully analyzing all the invoices and matching and this, that, and the other, so we'll come back with a final number once we get that worked out. T-Dog grant status, I'll cover that in just a second. Town Hall, repairs, renovation, and beautification. I will be coming to you at this BMA with this. Let me show it to you real quick. For your permission to post the following in the paper to begin to bid the project of renovating the town hall. And that includes, as you can see, the roof, researches in the parking lot, and if y'all noticed, it's in very bad shape. A little landscaping outside and potentially maybe upgrading our exterior sign. Coordinate, now, this is gonna be bid, we don't have to accept anything. But I want to be all-inclusive when we advertise it. We can do what we want with what money we have. Flooring and painting projects inside the buildings. In order for me to advertise this, y'all will have to approve it before I can. So you'll be seeing this at BMA, and I'll be asking you to approve this so I can go ahead and Sharon and I can post it in the paper and begin the bid process. And again, we're not committing to anything. We'll take bids, and just like standard bid package, they'll come in as sealed bids, and then the board will sit down in work session and review the bids, and we'll decide how much, everything, what, when, and how on what we desire to do. But I have to tell you, and this is something you already know, the roof is shot. The parking lot is crammed out, start turning to gravel. I mean, we need to act. And we do have money to do it from the general. So anyway, this will be coming to you at BMA for a decision. And I can't move until you allow me to move. Okay, multimodal grant. Sharon and I sat a conference call with T-Dog here a few days ago, and I had a good discussion with them about the preliminary drawings for multimodal. We, and again, this is a fully funded, well, we're paying five percent on the project. T-Dog's in, all the engineering, manner of crack's done involved, they're doing everything. And we're just picking up five percent of the bill, and they're picking up ninety-five percent of the bill. Seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars is the number. And as you know, it would potentially take a sidewalk from here all the way to on this side, the north side of the road, down to the boat ramp in that area at the battlefield. And then there would be a legitimate crossing there across the state road with signals and the little push-demand thing and all that kind of stuff that would take us over into Wells Park. Everything looked favorable. We did, from their initial plan, we did ask them to modify some things, like they had to cross in a certain place that we know won't work. You know, this, that, and the other. But what we're trying to get with the project, if optimally, if we could, we might try to get two crosses out of it. So more to follow on that, but we did have our initial call with them, with the engineering group, and it was our progress. But again, this project next year would be right-ofways and all that kind of stuff, legal stuff would come next year. And then actual construction would probably be lit by twenty twenty-five or something like that. Is the way that we're tracking. But a typical of T-Dog, this project is moving. It's moving, it's not sitting. Think about Bloodville. Bloodville's got the same project, and they're in year nine, and nothing has happened.
Oh, wow.
We're in year one, we're already planning and designing, we've already worked it out. So we're moving. The other projects that are, the water treatment plant renovation and the Carter Street sewer improvements, we've signed, I signed additional documents, what was it, this last week? And submitted then through the district, back to T-Dog. We've done everything we can do on our end, is what I'm saying. So we know we have the money on both. T-Dog has been a little bit of a bear because once, we got the money, and then they came back, and you know, the district is handling this grant for us. We approved that. But they're making up rules after, they're like, oh, but you need to submit this. Oh, but we forgot to tell you that we need to submit, and we're going through all that. But right now, as far as we know, we've given them everything they need from us. So we'll wait. But it looks like those projects are not gonna take off till next year or so, which is okay, it's okay. But they're tracking along just fine. Okay, let's see, equipment surplus. We just have a little bit of equipment that we're probably gonna come back again and try to sell. The board has already approved two of the old trucks out at, out at the shop, the former B C one, which was actually my own truck, and B C two, which was Mel Boyd's truck back in the old days. They didn't sell. So y'all have already approved those two trucks. So we're trying to find, we may have a buyer, and they don't run it. Either one of them don't run it. They're just sitting out there at the shop. And we may have a buyer for them, so if we do, hopefully, we'll sell them.
Didn't we ever sell the Explorer?
No, it's sitting out back. It's sitting out back. Actually, we haven't sold it. We sent it because we thought it might be useful to have, and we just kind of kept it. And then we sent it down to Superior the other day and actually had the valve stem replaced. Greg had told us that the four-wheel drive didn't work, but it does. We got, climbed up that hill and they...
It's actually a truck, well, you need to drive it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's still here, it's still here for us to use. And they claimed there was a gas tank leak, and the guy couldn't find anything wrong. So it's back there, you know, if we need it. Y'all have surplus, did we ever decide to sell it? We can, you've already approved that. But right now, it's back there buying. I've got Keoma to it.
Great.
So food truck park, that project's still working. There's a lot of technicalities with the state involved with that, so I'm still working on that. Senior Center, no movement on it, they're just stumbling along. They just, you can't get them to talk about it.
Well, do they still rent that place, you know?
The what?
Do they still rent it out?
Yeah.
Do they?
Blood City Senior Citizens Incorporated, its corporation actually owns it.
Well, we used to have our church.
And Elaine Good is the CEO of that incorporation. Although it's only got, like I said, people in it, they're bored. And, but yeah, they're still renting it out. And we're, and as far as I know, we're all still interested in, you know, doing something down there. But I do have some good news on another building, that's Wesley's. So we have shown interest to Blood City United Methodist Church because they are selling the Wesley's Center. And I was, I was, we've been working, this is a process, months has went by. And they decided as a body, the church, to sell it. And then they had to get, since United Methodist is an organization, they had to elevate that to the bishop or whatever, and they did get approval for that. So Jack Gillan, who is the chairman of that committee, texts me yesterday and asked about our interest in person, Wesley's Center. The number right now, wrong number, wrong number, none of negotiations, we haven't looked at it. Vice Mayor and I talked about it a little bit, one hundred and twenty-five thousand. So in the near future, we will gather and go down and have Jack show us the Wesley's Center. At that cost, that's a lot at that cost. But we don't know...
I remember a little church in that building a million times.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I remember when it was post-op.
Post-op.
I went in there, registered for selective service when I was eighteen. I remember, you know, that's forty years ago. So anyway, more to follow about that to come to the board with. You know, we are in a position, and Sharon would agree, we'll agree, that it would be smart financially for us to utilize some of the general fund to buy property. So nothing, I haven't, I text Jack back, and I said, I'll be in touch. That's pretty much what I said, you know what I'm saying? We are very interested, I will be in touch. And as this comes down, I will definitely keep the board informed, and I'll be at some point, when I can arrange it and it's convenient to your schedule, we will go up and visit the Wesley's Center and look at it as a group. And I don't know the condition of the building, I have no idea, but it is strategically placed on Main Street, and it does have good parking lots. So there's a lot of advantages to the town. So more to follow. Cost savings. On that particular thing, I want to bring something to your attention. I should have highlighted that in red, so I'm gonna do it now. We have an agreement with First Tennessee Development District for a planer. And Ben's on planning and zoning, so he knows about the planner. It's approximately eleven thousand dollars a year that we pay First Tennessee Development District to provide us with someone to help us with planning and zoning. We've been doing it for years. This last, this last year, and Sharon can attest to this, the cost went up twenty percent. It was around eight thousand dollars, went up to almost eleven thousand dollars, and we approved it in the budget. So I've been doing this for about a year now. And during the time, in my time as an alderman and vice mayor and on planning and zoning board, I saw, a lot of times we didn't have a planner. The district didn't provide one, they were, they, they're having a hard time of turnover then. And also, I saw the Liston Colton plan, I'll just say that. So something I would like for us to consider is that I feel strongly, and I've talked to Sandy, who does the majority of the planning and zoning work, with me and with us, and is most experienced in the staff, thirty-four years of doing stuff. I'm not sure we need it. I think we're not really getting anything from the planner. If we have, we have a brand new zoning ordinance that we're getting ready to pass that clearly defines what we did here in Bluff City and it is commensurate with TCA. If we had other planning questions, we can get them answered on our own. I don't think someone with a degree in art, and that's our former planner had a degree in art, is worth eleven thousand dollars a year. So we are in a position-
When have we ever, when have we ever used it?
Not really, anytime. The agreement, Ben, says that if we give ninety days notice, we could dissolve the agreement. And that any, we've already paid them for the year, but they would have to refund us.
Reimburse back.
Right. So I would like for the board to consider to allow me the authority to dissolve the agreement and recomp about five or six thousand dollars. And with that five or six thousand dollars in that part of the budget, we could move it to public relations, we could move it to somewhere else.
Find the Christmas decorations.
And, and use it, use it-
No, I'll stick my hand on this year.
And I would not ask if I didn't feel comfortable.
And he said we don't never use them?
I mean, he, we let them know at this point, we do our own agenda. We do our own minutes. See, the development district for some of the municipalities like Uniforion, Irwin, they do everything for them, they don't do anything with planning and zoning. We do our own. Sandy does the minutes, Sandy records the meetings. I, her and I develop the agenda every month, we don't use that service. So the only thing we would need past that, if we needed it, was a question of legality. We don't need that. We have a brand new zoning ordinance that took us, what, Ben, a year to go through? Eight months maybe? What, what can they answer for this?
Yeah, what are we paying for?
We're paying for nothing, for nothing. And so I, I would like, I would like to present this in discussion and action to the board next week. And if you agree and you approve this request, I will send formally to the district a letter that requests we dissolve the agreement. And we'll recall the, the money that we paid.
That's be seventy-five percent of it?
Yeah, I mean, Jim, you know, July one started, we paid ten, what, ten thousand seven hundred dollars, I think it was, ten seven or ten eight. So, you know, then ninety days passed the move, so it would probably be around first DC or second DC. So, yeah, we'd probably get back five, six thousand dollars when South City did it. And with that money, I have been working on another effort that's kind of outside the city but would be good for us, and that is a Chamber of Commerce type effort. Because we don't have an economic developer and we, we don't have a budget, we don't have the money to make an economic development. So we might be able to use some of that money in public relations to kind of help that organization get started, to get out, and y'all know a Chamber of Commerce is basically, it's five oh one C six. So it's not us, you know what I'm saying? And that five oh one C six would go out in the business community and solicit membership and use that funding to go out and grow our economy and recruit the businesses. So anyway, and there's plenty of ways to use five or six thousand dollars, is what I'm trying to say, other than just giving it to the district for no service. So be thinking about that, I'm bringing it to you for, we're talking about, we're working on. But I, I do intend to put it on the agenda, approve BMA and discussion and action. Okay, we don't have any open positions at this point. Our newest employee, Nathaniel Hawthorne, is doing very well in the police academy. And he will be graduating, I think, what was it, Justin, second week September? Fourteenth September. And he'll be coming back to us, but he will be assigned, he will work for Justin and he'll be assigned to a field training officer for thirty or days or more. And he won't be legitimately on the road by himself till probably mid-October or something like that. But he's doing well in the academy, everything looks great. Yeah, aside that, we don't have any open positions at this point. Patriot Trail, I had a big meeting supposedly this month with O B T A and the National Park Service. And our guy from the National Park Service, Jeff Ellison, had to push it out. So it'll probably September-ish when we meet again, I'll give you more information on that. These two projects right here, signal light out here on nineteen, a directional signal light, traffic engineer's been out there and looked at it. So we're just waiting on the results on that, on getting a directional signal out there at three ninety and nineteen. The bigger project of the, the, what I belong to, the John City M P O, we all belong to, out down at Leveney and Allison Road, is still on the books. T-Dog projects move slow, but it's still fourth in priority up here. What is ahead of us is the Boons Creek intersection, they got a lot of stuff going on out there. And some different things that are going on on twenty-six with it. So we're fourth in the chute as far, and that's better because as you see, we're fourth forty-first in the chute. So we've moved up to fourth.
I did have somebody ask me about those posts that run through the shoulder right there at the red light where you turn to Big City.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm assuming Department of Transportation.
Yeah, T-Dog does that, State Road, so- They're trying to do something to mitigate that, but the total solution is about a four or five million dollar project. And it's gonna put turn lanes, new signals, this, that and the other, and that's gonna be a T-Dog. But if, that'll be a combined project. That'll be us, Saltland County and City of John City, I'll be in that pot, you know? But it is still fourth place, because I went to that meeting the other day. Still working on our doggy park. What we're waiting on now, we're gonna have Mariner Craig, they owe us a favor. So they're gonna survey our land. Out at the swinging bridge and get me right on where it is. So that I can come back to you and we can talk about fencing and, you know, all that kind of stuff. So it's still working. Picking and park thus far has been very successful. At very low cost to the town, we're using minimum employees to do that. And also, we are compensating bands, but at this point, I mean, the first band was three hundred bucks and the second band was two. And we do have money in our public relations fund to be able to do that. I think there's five thousand dollars or so in there, so we're not, it's not straining us. And the first event was not very well attended, but it was the first one. And then the one we had Saturday, gosh, there was, I don't know, seventy-five, eight people at least. So it's starting to pick up, it's starting to pick up and citizen reaction is good, I mean. And the way I do that is, town manager, as town manager, is I prepare for a big event and what we'll do is we'll bring on reserve officers and the duty officer and somebody in command on the police side, and then potentially two public worksmen and that are prepared to barricade Tennessee, Carter and Holston. And then if it don't work out, we just collapse it all down real small and send people home, you know what I'm saying? So thus far it's working pretty good. We're still looking for bands and of different genres and, you know, so we'll, if, if, you know, right now, I recommend we continue to try to do that. It's not straining us financially or anything, and we're getting good, it's growing every time we do it, so. Parks and Rec Committee, no volunteers for that so far, it's still on the books, I always throw it up there. Twenty twenty-two C C R, the deadline for it is prepared. The deadline for it is the first October and I'll finish that up this week. Again, as I reported to you at last work session, we were ahead of the game. We published it on the Water Bills, we had it on the website, we sent it to T-Deck in a timely manner, we did all our tests. So all I have to do is write a letter and sign it to T-Deck and say, we did all these things and then we're done. So we met, so we exceeded the standard on C C R this year. We did have a theft incident recently at the works. Someone, we don't know how, but they stole our one worker, I don't know, had one grading box. You understand what a grading box is, goes behind a tractor. They stole it, it's, we don't know how. I mean, it was, it's a four or five hundred pound piece of equipment, I mean, it's not something you put in your pocket. And we did have a bunch of hand tools stolen from the shop. The value was a little bit over five thousand dollars worth of stuff. The police department investigated, they're still working on some leads right now. We have claimed it with our insurance, so we'll see something coming back from them. They'll probably appreciate the tools a little bit. But that investigation is ongoing. I did purchase nine solar wireless cameras for the city garage. At a cost, I think it costs seven hundred dollars, if I remember right, six hundred eighty, seven, seven hundred dollars. Alan and the guys are in the process of installing them. They are Alexa driven, they're three hundred sixty degree pivot, they're nice and they're solar. So they're nice cameras and we can, we'll be able to put them on our phones and look at property. And the next piece is, I'm talking to Tri-C Defense because the gate does not operate properly automatically and hasn't for a long time. That gate was put in when I was put for a seat, that's one of my projects. And we currently do lock and chain the gate, but we changed the, uh, the keys and, you know, this and that. But what I want to try to do is figure out how much it would cost to put that gate back into operation like it should be. I think the box is still there, don't know exactly what's wrong with it. But, and we have counseled and cautioned our public works employees that even if you're gonna be gone for five minutes, lock the gate back, you know what I'm saying, and this thing. So we're gonna secure the shop even more than we did file, like I say, the loss and then the department, Lieutenant Smith and Sergeant Johnson are still looking for leads on our tools. Just making sure they're not popping up on Facebook from somebody trying to sell them and, you know, this and that. We've had some leads, we've investigated, but no, nothing defended so far. We are, we are in the process, this last year, I've already told you this, there's no better way for me to say it, we gave away a lot of old water last year. We gave away millions of gallons of water because of expired and faulty water meters that have passed their lifecycle, they're just old and they're not working properly. We did purchase, and y'all approved it, a hundred forty new Badger radio meters. Alan's got about forty or fifty of them in, we've still got about eighty, ninety out there to install. We're doing it systematically, finding the problem meters first and going out. Some of that is not as easy as putting the meter in. Some of them, we have setter adapters, we call them spuds, that when you put that new meter in, it's not, the length is different. So we have to split it in. And then there are some where the setters are old style setters and they don't work with that current meter. So we have to go, and the setters are expensive, they're three hundred bucks a piece or so. But not every day, you know what I'm saying? And we have to actually go dig it and replace the setter and put a new meter on it. We're, I'm pushing Alan hard to any spare time we have to have guys out changing out meters so that we can actually regulate the water and we can charge accordingly. We really need to look at buying more meters. What happened was, all the meters, we have eleven hundred forty-eight meters, they were all put in at one time, so they're just dying, 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 dying. And what we're doing here with the way that we're trying to do it is we're trying to replace, and marking the meters that we're replacing so we know they've got a ten-year lifespan and then we'll come back over here with another hundred and mark then, you know what I'm saying, or whatever. So we can systematically in the future replace them before they die. And this is a big problem because that's one of the reasons, well, y'all know through the budget, our water revenue from last year was not what we wanted it to be. We wanted it to be a little bigger number and unfortunately we just gave some of it away. Another thing that we have done, Sharon and I, is, and I, I approve them when they come, is we are a lot harder on adjustments. The, we did a lot of adjustments last year and we always err towards assistance. We always, we do and we always will. But like, for example, on pool adjustments, those sometimes can be pretty large adjustments. And I'm asking to see the pool. Because everybody ain't honest, you know what I'm saying? And a pool adjustment can be two to five hundred dollars, it can be a big one, you know what I'm saying? So I'm really looking, not being mean to anybody if they're legit, if they're adjusting, you know? The way the adjustment process works is somebody has a leak, they come in, they fill out a little form, ask for adjustment, if they had a leak, they show that they fixed it, you know what I'm saying? And we were a little liberal, so we've tightened up the reins a little bit on adjustments. And that'll bring us a little water back. But, but again, with any citizens that have problems, that need a little help, you know, I'm there. They call and they're like, hey, can I have a couple more days? And I'm like, absolutely, you know what I'm saying, I do. But those who burned me, they don't, they don't, we still have new business, you know what I'm saying? So we are living at that. Besides that, that concludes my briefing to the board, as town manager. So is there any specific questions on this list? Anything y'all know that I don't know, that citizens have reported or?
My neighbor with the burnt down house.
Yeah.
Contacted me about doing a deed, so, to transfer the property, so.
Got her name on my desk.
Pam Lowry.
Yeah, Pam Lowry owns the property.
And it Kennedy me.
Kennedy me, so they're gonna get-
So they're gonna do something with it.
And they were kind and they, I thought.
That's probably why.
I asked, I asked them to fence it and they did. And, you know, that's better than what we had and they moved. And they moved and they didn't, they didn't tear it. They got the fence up. Cause Josh and I both went, we went out there and looked at it. And I met with Candy and I think a couple of her siblings and maybe mom here one time. So, uh, uh, on that same note, I'm glad you brought that up, Ben. Couple of properties in town, uh, specifically the property down on, uh, McFellin. The house burned down on McFellin. Uh, getting a lot of feedback from that house that it's, uh, farming infested and a lot of different things. There is a, there's a camper down there now behind that house. And we do know from a police standpoint that there was drug activity in that house before it burned. We probably need to move toward condemning that property. Uh, because, uh, nothing good coming out of that right now. I mean, uh, there are some good folks that live down in that area and I'm hearing reports that there's wolf rats and all kinds of pestilence down there because that, you know, house should have been razed. Should have been razed, but it hasn't been. So more to follow, but I'm gonna probably come to you pretty soon about condemning that property and, uh, taking legal action if this goes on. You know, according to the ordinance, it says that, uh, we condemn it. Uh, we can, uh, we can force the red, the owner to raise it and clean it up. Or we can bring somebody in and we can charge them. So that one's a hot one. And then we, we've got a few more around town. We want, one of the reasons that I want to try to get Josh on board for quick is that, well, just for building inspection, yes. For codes unfortunately, but we want to try to take it a very passive approach to it. And it's just like, I'll give you a good example today. Uh, gentleman down on Tennessee Avenue that, uh, had these big old moving trucks out in front of his property, Mr. White. Uh, I approached him. They'd been down there for years. And the one moving truck was, did not operate and it's been on sea property for five years. And I went down there one day and I just met Mr. White. I went knocked on doors, identified myself and I said, Mr. White, I said, uh, how, how can we work together? And I, I, you know, obviously acquainted him with violation of order. So I said, you're in violation of order. So I said, that, if that vehicle does not operate and it's on sea property and I want to work with you. So how can we work through this? That you get that truck and get it off sea property. And this other truck here is also on sea property. And, uh, he was a little defensive at first and a little crass with me. And I said, now listen, sir, I said, I'd like to work this out with you. Now, if you don't want to work it out, I'm gonna make a phone call. And there's gonna be two cruisers up here in about thirty seconds and then we'll start writing citations. So can we work this out? And he said, okay, we can. He just called me a while ago today. Matter of fact, Paul was in my office and he's, I said, you keep me up to date. And every, once a week he's calling. I'm working on it. I'm still working on it there. He called me a while ago and he said, I just sold that moving truck on sea property and the guys are gonna come get it a couple of days. It's gonna be done. So that's what Josh and I want to do. Cause we've got problems around town, folks not maintaining their property. Right? We want to take that passive approach, not a police officer. But Josh or myself going out and saying, hey, look, uh, you've got five gen cars here and then I'm running. We really need to get some tags on, get them operational, get it cleaned up. How can we work through this? You know what I'm saying?
Not like somebody pouring and just trying to throw authority.
Yeah.
Trying to do it right. Better go along ways, right?
And that's hard. Faster that way.
It's been successful. And, uh, same thing applies and y'all probably know the property. We've got a problem out here on Old Highway Levy where we have a, uh, a, a home, two, and two campers. And the home is ref and the campers are ref. And the ordinance says, single family residence, one home, one water tank, one sewer tank. And they've got people renting a camper and they've got this and they're belittled and they're parking in the road. And we're at a place now, Greg and I, where we're getting ready to take a smash. Because we've tried to go out and talk to them and they ain't working. So it's, it's terrible, man. And, uh, and we without, well, just, there's things going on out there. I'm not at liberty to discuss some of the things, but Justin's smiling. There's things going on there that.
I know what that means when you got multiple RVs in the, or campers on.
So that kind, I mean, it's not, and then.
Yeah, I have a fifth wheel.
Yeah, and you got that and you are within order.
Yes, I am.
Right in front of your house.
Yes, I am.
It's right in the order.
It sure is.
But when, another thing is the residents of that road don't deserve that. Cause they mow the yard. They keep their house clean. They don't park out in the road. They don't curse at people when they go by. They don't have a mud driveway that runs everywhere, every time that it rains. Not fair to, to the folks that work for, uh, the, uh, I'll tell you a little story. That's my fault. I'll tell you a little story and we get done. And, uh, but, uh, anyway, we don't need to be mean. But it's not fair to the good citizens we have in our town. That's like Miss Restus. Miss Restus on Main Street, White House on Main Street. She mows the way they turn on your yard. She's ninety years old. You know what I'm saying?
Who is she?
Mr. Peggy Restus.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, she lives right.
She's ninety?
Yeah. She lives, she lives right next to Miss Green, you know. And if that, if a ninety-year-old lady can get out there and I'm telling you, they ain't, uh, dragging a cigarette wrapper on her place. I mean, you can't find, but I'm seeing good people work hard, work their jobs. They have kids. Keep their mud yards mowed, keep it clean, don't have gin and stuff, yeah. And, uh, like I say, we don't want to become the, the good, the good stopper. But we have to enforce ordinances, you know? So that's what we're hoping, uh, and I know Josh will do a good job. In, in doing that kind of stuff. And also, as far as Josh goes, right now we're using, you know, the, uh, state Tennessee Farm Insurance Inspectors for any of the projects that's going on in town. And, uh, we want to pull that authority back into the town if we can and, uh, be able to enjoy the latitude of doing our own stuff.
Well, what's going on down here, I still call it Bayes, that place across, all that stuff over there, right down here. I used to call it Bayes, the old gas station down.
Oh, you know, oh, Mr. Ray's place down there, you know.
I don't know his name.
Let's see, his name's Camron Ray.
Okay, so have we got that straightened out? Yeah?
You're talking about the guy with.
The guy.
The guy with all the, yeah.
Oh, Troy, that's Troy Rose.
We are, uh, we.
So we've got that done.
Well, no, there's more to do. Uh, that's, uh, I'll just say, following our work on that. Because Mr. Red, Troy does not own the property. It's actually two laws. And, uh, he's in violation of orders. And he has been cited in this court. Uh, and was cited and felt guilty by Judge Lawrence for violation of ordinance. And, uh, those charges have compounded since that time. So I'm talking about Mr. Redledge, not Troy.
I don't know him.
Not the guy you see out there trying to be flea market man, his dad.
Ah, well.
His dad owns the property.
I don't know him.
And see, that's a, and we're on public record and I can't, but I'm just saying there is pending legal action. On that property. Uh, and you know, I don't care to go public with this. Properties like that, when we can acquire them as a city, is good for us. If opportunities come like that, especially on the state road, when we could legitimately purchase those properties and clean them up, that would be good for the city. And we're looking for those opportunities. I'll say that. And I don't think anybody likes that.
I know.
Yeah. So, uh, let me think, let me think. Anything else to tell you? No, uh, I thought we asked for every one more thing. Uh, we, uh, I, uh, I sent the, uh, the home consultant. I was gonna look at my email real quick just in case I might. Sometimes I can see things here I need to tell you. Uh, there's a good one. I'm gonna have, uh, Mr. McNutt down pretty soon to talk about, he's from TBA. And to talk about things we could do to improve our ball field down in there and our boat slips. And he's gonna come down and meet with me and I'll get the TBA take you on. I'll bring it back to you on what we can do. Now, mind you, we do have a TWRA permit that is standing to be able to put five buoys from, that would basically run, uh, if you're coming back from Hammer Island there and you come back near the bridge. And I can show you exactly, but anyway, we do have authority to be able to do that if we want to install weight buoys this winter when the, when the water drops. And, uh, by the way, I did have a conversation with Lana Moore. She's a good friend of mine. And, uh, she now is, works at the director level at the TBA. And, uh, after next week, you're gonna start dropping the lake. And I tried to, I tried to pose a convincing argument and ask for a delay. And a lot of municipal leaders did, uh, especially here because our citizenry and the folks that visit us would really like to say, see the water stay up a lot longer than it does.
Well, it stays warmer longer.
Yeah, like.
The Labor Day, that's been since.
Matter of fact, I just shared.
Always dropping after Labor Day.
Heard you answer.
Three, one, two, three, man.
Yeah.
Wasn't like seven yet Christmas last year.
Yeah, and as you can see, I've talked to, I've talked to, if you look up on the screen, you see my email. And, uh, Lana's telling me that, that, uh, the target, yeah. But she's giving me, uh, the guide here from TBA on the warm lakes. But anyway, if you go look at it, basically says Labor Day, they're gonna start inching the lake.
Shit.
But we're not gonna be as bad affected as the other end. Uh, the other end is gonna dry up quick. You know what I'm saying? And I mean, on the river end, we're on the river end. We'll, uh, we'll stay up. We'll find her and then rest it. But anyway, I tried to talk to her and said, hey, can we talk to the TBA? And I know, uh, like County Farm Bristol did and, you know, a lot of us were ganged up on TBA. We're like, how about another thirty days, you know, or something like that?
It's business.
It ain't working.
For a lot of folks.
It is business for our tech house. It's business for, uh, our coffee shop and other businesses that are coming down that way. And, uh, oh, and on that same note, I guess y'all noticed that we had our second best of the best, which is Bluff Sea Diner.
Oh, yeah.
We now have two, yeah, Southwood Coffee Shop and Bluff Sea Diner are both best of the best in the dry cities. That was great. Uh, let's see, I was trying to think, anything else I was gonna tell you here? No, this is just work, work, work right here. Work, 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 work. That's it. So I guess then I'm subject to your questions. I mean, I wanna brief that. I just came.
When is the next event?
Event?
Event or we're gonna have something, game of, uh, at Wilt's Park, singing?
Uh, at this point, we, the next big event for us is Heritage Day. It's about thirty days.
Okay. All right. And also.
Except for picking in the park now, if we are able to get a band.
I can get you a band.
Uh, I wouldn't mind to have another picking in the park, uh, before Heritage Day. But, uh, this, and, uh, I'm gonna have a, I'm gonna put together a comprehensive brief on Heritage Day. Basically, the way this thing's gonna go down is we're gonna have four bands like we normally do. Uh, different genre out there is gonna be a Christian bass man. There's gonna be kind of a rhythm and bluesy bass man called From the Edge. Uh, The Couple, the dad and the daughter, Thomas, whatever the name is. They were really popular last time. Uh, they're coming back. I can't remember the name of the country band, but it is not Southern rebellion. And it's not shooter. I can tell you that. But, uh, we tried to mix the genres. Uh, the car show this year is gonna be like forty times bigger than it's ever been. Because what we did, we brought in a group that manages car shows and we're a lot paying them. It's okay. And they brought a fall in with them. And, uh, we, we did the same thing where Sarah and Todd did or, or the Band Boosters thing we did a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, they had, I think it was a hundred and twenty-nine vehicles up there. So, uh, down on that end, we're expecting a lot more cars and motorcycles. We've changed the prices up a little bit. Uh, we've increased the, the, the cost to get in. That used to be five bucks, ten bucks now. But it was able, we're able then, cause you know what we do? The proceeds of the car show go to a charity. We don't keep any of that money. You know what I'm saying? So that looks actually bigger and better. And, uh, we're also gonna bring, uh, Rhonda, the karaoke lady down on that end.
Oh, good.
To try to bring a little bit more entertainment down to that end. You know what I'm saying? Instead of you're just sitting up here at that end, you could go down on this end or whatever. Yard sale's gonna be the same. There's a bunch of nonprofits coming in. Food trucks look pretty good. Got a different variety of things. You know, we got barbecue, we got breakfast and we've got, you know, canned popcorn, you know, this and the others. So I'll give you a better brief, but it's coming together. Looks pretty good.
And also, uh, I would like to say this, the family committee, they're doing such a great job. I think everybody would probably agree. We need to do something for them too.
Yeah, yeah.
We need, we need to recognize them.
So we, all, all we need to do then is, uh, determine what we wanna do and when the board would like to do it. And, uh, we'll throw some resources at it and make it happen. I mean, it's no problem. And then again, like I say, Sandy, I wanna make sure that.
Has Sandy contacted you or something?
But.
Not really.
Yeah, I'm thinking that, you know, we wanna do Sandy right because she's sat on board twice. You know, and I wanna make sure that we recognize her service and she goes out right. Whenever that is.
Whenever.
Whenever that is. I don't know when that's gonna be, but it is, but, uh, so you, you don't miss anything.
We'll have to build a, a seat, won't we?
Yeah, cause we, uh, I don't, there's a lot of things that we can't get down to three, four.
It's gonna be problematic. I mean, we don't have to run a special election through, with three.
We don't?
We don't.
We gotta figure out who to.
But it's gonna be, it's gonna be problematic on both, I mean, and then.
You got that.
Because, you know, if somebody gets sick, we don't have to need it.
Right.
Right. So, uh, we, we all need to be thinking about, you know, any good candidates that.
I don't know anybody.
And, uh, man, that's horrible. I mean, really is, uh, that could join us on the board. Because as you know, you know, elections aren't twenty twenty-four, so.
I wish some young people would reach out, you know? New faces, new ideas. I don't wanna go back. I don't wanna go back.
Right. Be good to have some new folks, some new ideas and, uh, some youth would be good. People, public services not attractive. I mean, they just, you know, they, they'd rather be watching Wheel of Fortune than being here. It's, uh, it's, it takes your time. But hopefully Laura Brings and Bobby, you know? Uh, I was trying to think now.
Well, how long can we go history?
Until election. But we can still.
But we can still, uh, we pretty much have to be unanimous on a lot of things, like any kind of ordinance, yeah? Cause I can't break your tie. You know, I mean, we would, and I don't think you can, it takes more than two votes, right?
But we can function though.
We can function, we can, but if anybody's sick or, you know. We're just gonna have, we're not unanimous, we, we, we have to have a forum.
Somebody's sick, we just have to have a special call?
We just have to reschedule, we have to reschedule.
As soon as possible.
Right. But yeah, I mean, with three though, according to charter, we do not. Now, if we lost one more, I'd just have to, I would have to notify the election commission, we have no special one.
Cause I wasn't sure, I thought it was three, so it's not.
Right. Right, yeah. Paul and I verified it. So, uh.
Now, election is, I mean, I, it's not that long away.
Yeah, it's not that long away. Now, it's not that long away.
Right, and we got our budget done, right?
Yeah. We'll run through another budget for election.
Well, yeah, that's later on down the road.
Yeah, next summer, but.
So, we're okay.
Yeah, well, I mean, there's no, there's no big business we got going on.
Right.
Now, the budget's passed, I mean, what I'm seeing, the rest of the year should be pretty mundane. I mean, we'll probably, if, uh, if we put this capital project together for the city hall, that'll be a fairly big though. It'll be a significant amount of money to do what we need to do. Uh, no, if, if we run into anything, it's just gonna be buying some, you know what I'm saying, for the most part.
As long as you have to have ordinances.
Yeah.
You have to have ordinances on the project.
Right.
For the work and everything, cause it's not in the budget, anything that's not in the budget.
Yeah, right, we'll have to amend the budget.
You would have to amend the budget.
But we need to get all that done before next, you know, it would take three.
Yeah, it would have to be unanimous.
Well, three, just takes three though.
It, it would have to be unanimous, if we lost Sandy, if Sandy's around, we got it now. It'd be three to one or whatever, but.
Well, we'd be okay.
But yeah, it's okay, that's it, we just have to amend the budget ordinance if we. Cause we didn't put many in the budget.
Right.
But we didn't do it purpose, you know what I'm saying?
Right, but we've been talking about that though for a while.
But we have the money, it's no problem, we just have to amend the budget, right? And besides that, I mean, we don't have any other big purposes planned. That's a, that's pretty, unless, you know, we've still got, like I say, I went out there the other day, we've still got about nine water meters to put in, so that'll take a minute. We do need to be thinking about more though, we do, cause we don't wanna give away revenue. It's not fair to citizens, not fair to us, I mean, you know, we might, uh, if their meter's not functioning, they could be undercharged or whatever, so, I mean, we don't, we don't know, you know? And for the telemetry, we need to keep per T deck, we need access.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's just something we gotta.
Yeah, it's just, it's household maintenance, household maintenance, man.